It's a call to order the meeting of the Rutland Town Select Board. This is our regular meeting. Today is September 9th. How did that happen? And we have a full Select Board? Let's see, I think I started at your end last time. So Kurt Hathaway, Joe DiNardo, Mary Ashcroft, Matt Eddy, and Sharon Russell.
I wasn't here last time. And you didn't even miss me.
Sure we did.
Okay, let's move right along. Please rise and join me for the pledge of allegiance.
We have a reply from the United States of America in tribute of public for justice, motivation, under God, individual, and liberty, justice, for all.
Brady. We have in our packet a Select Board minutes for our last meeting, which was August 26th. Is there a motion to approve?
Omo.
Questions made? Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Matt. Any additions, corrections, deletions? If not, all in favor of approving the minutes, please say aye.
Aye.
Sharon, you were absent.
Yes.
So, and that's noted here. So all opposed? None? The motion carries four, zero, and one abstention. And I'm going to sign nine and send it on. Okay.
Oops.
So move to the orders.
Motion's been made to approve the orders. Is there a second?
Second.
Okay. Now, we have some discussion under approving the orders. There is an item there for the final payment for VMS. And Sharon's got the stack in front of her. And Joe is our clerk of the work. So we'll look to Joe for a report and advice as to whether we approve.
So I, about three weeks ago, we were emailed the final request from VMS for the payment. And at the time, I wasn't sure if we were, what to do. So I had Kerry separate out the amount for the transfer switch for the sprinkler system and for the work, the extra electrical work. And we paid that. And then Vic Shappi called me and he was a little confused. So we talked about it. And then I said, well, you know, I said, I wasn't, you know, the board hadn't said that I could okay that yet. But I told them we would have it on this week's orders. And did a little bit of checking and called Ed Clark. And he said, yeah, everything is done to his satisfaction as the architect on the building and the designer of that building. I checked with Chris Clark. I didn't get a chance to talk with Chief Dumas. But usually if there's something, they'd let me know. But I believe everything that was in the original contract to do is done. There were some, one deletion for the curbs, the concrete stops for the parking places. And we took 15 out. We deleted the ones along the west side of the building. So Vic got ahold of Fabians because they were providing all that. And there was a deduction from the final payment of $1,500. And that's noted in the amount that's there. I did have the accurate numbers in the final amount and they are on my desk at home. But the building is about $271,000, $272,000 over. The original bid was $5,148,000 or right in there. And we spent about 273, 272 over that. So it's about 5.4 for the actual construction of the building.
Okay.
And in that final payment, for the, I believe, per the contract and per the architect, we're obligated to pay now.
Okay.
And I-
That's the retainage that we're releasing?
That was, that was the last of what was, we paid that down as we went along. So that's where we're at.
Is that the, does the retainage cover all of that amount they're looking for? Or do we have to tap into something else to pay it?
No, that should, well, we had $250,000 contingency fund, which we've used all of that. And we went about $23,000 over, which is about the amount of that transfer switch.
Okay.
You know, the 250 we had would have covered it pretty close. And that switch kind of put us over.
So, and this money would come from the-
Capital Improvement Account. That's what we've used to pay for any of the money that was above the, what we had bonded for. I don't remember the exact amount of the bond. But I don't know if the bond included the $250,000 contingency. I think it did. So, so, yeah.
I used to have all of those numbers in the top of my head.
But that's where we are.
Yeah.
And we, and this, well, I might as well just finish what I got to tell you.
Yes, please.
So the state of Vermont, Department of, well, with the fire prevention, public, whatever it is. Fire safety. We have a form that I've got to go out there with Kerry and figure out the exact cost. We have the building costs, but the engineering and that, and all of that stuff will be-
Soft costs.
Right. And then
Okay.
There was an amount that we paid the state of Vermont for our permit. And we were going to be over. So they're going to want another little contribution.
You know.
That's a, that's a play. So, and it's just a way to, you know, that, that's-
But we're not going to count any of the innards that we-
I do not believe though. It's, it's, it would be site engineering, that design and the building construction.
Okay. All right.
The rest of that is whatever. And then, and those, once we have those numbers, then I'll get that paperwork filed. And I'll do that.
So for the purposes of approving the requested last payment for VMS, any, oh, any further discussions on VMS payment? I think you've answered it. The money to come out of the capital improvement fund. Do we have a question on the police? What, because Ed just walked in. So we can catch him totally unawares and ask him.
Two docking stations, those were for you guys.
Okay. And we had talked about those and previously approved them. Okay. We don't need to-
And, and that won't be part of this anyway, right? But that's part of the order, but not part of the VMS portion.
No, no, no. That was, no, no. This was a separate item that was down here.
The blue paper.
Blue paper. So we're all set with that. Any further discussion on approving the orders? No? All in favor? Please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries five, zero. So thank you all. And thanks to VMS. And we're thanking them by sending them a check. Best possible way. Any announcements from our board members? No. Update from Select Board Chair. Couple of things, reminder that articles for the circle are due on the 15th, which is, is that Friday? Monday. Okay. Phew, I've got the weekend. So department heads, please do get in. So this will be the first circle article, which will come out about a month later after the summer. So if you did stuff in the summer that you want people to know about, this would be the addition of the circle to put it in and get it to Janelle. And thanks to Janelle for doing it. I sent around to the Select Board, I got late notice this afternoon that the Diamond Run Mall's land use permit amended, amendment has been provisionally approved. They've, they've treated it as minor, which means they issue a proposed permit. And it stands unless somebody requests a hearing before September 30th. So, yeah. This is probably the, it's a faster way of doing it than just setting it for hearing and going through a hearing. So this has all, I took a quick look at the permit conditions. I sent it around to you folks too. It pretty much tracks what we were told. And I've asked Bill to make a copy of this and make sure it goes in the file. Again, this is the demolition for everything, but the-
Kmart.
Kmart. And, and the reclamation of the middle area from impervious ground to ground that will accept water. So that's good news. And that's a good thing to know about. I'll deal with the other stuff at the end. It's just a thank you note from one of our students. Okay. Are there any questions from the floor or public comments from folks not otherwise on the agenda? I'm looking around the room, the crowded back area, and I'm not seeing anything other than our usual folks.
Suspects.
I wasn't going to say suspects.
You got to.
Not going to.
That's right.
Call, like you said.
Pretty much.
Right out of Castle Plain.
And there's no box lighting up. So we'll move along. Mike Rowe, Town Rec Director.
Evening all. How are you?
Evening.
I'll stay close to you tonight.
Oh, how lucky I am.
Yes, you are. Couple of things. We are having a rec committee next week at 4:30 on Tuesday. And then we'll report out after that. Soccer, thanks to Bill, is online. So our games officially start this week. So if you want to check the kids out, they're either playing up at Northwood or they're playing over in Pittsford, depending on your age level, but that is on the town's website. So please check that out. Today, we kicked off our K12 soccer program behind school. We have about 45 little ones running around. It's quite adorable. Someone said it's, some parent thought, oh, it's like herding cats. I'm like, yeah, but cats don't talk back to you. So that was, that was great. The middle school kids and coaches do a wonderful job with that right out back at school. Soccer on Northwood, we started last weekend. And we'll run for the next six or seven Saturdays. We have, we're hosting all the U-10, which is grade three and four, boys and girls. I have two fields set up on the back fields. And we did a test run on Saturday in the downpouring rain, which was great. So I didn't think we could park, you know, 70 cars, but we did because there's four teams playing at a time. You can just multiply that and then it rotates every hour. So yes, we have two games going. So there's four teams playing. And then they, they're done. And then another four teams show up. And then another four teams show up. And then another four teams show up. So I've got it pretty much down packed as parking. And they were really good with that. So that's, that was a huge success on our first kind of like test run with all the people up there. So very happy with that. That's going to be a very smooth, you know, there's four or 500 people up there on Saturdays, which is great. It's what the park is about. Our senior outing is either going to be on the 23rd or the 30th, depending on Mother Nature, to go up to Killington and ride the gondola. And then look at the foliage. So if you would like to go up and hang with us on the gondola, that would be great. Lunch is on your own. Lunch is on your own at the top.
Thought of hanging.
No pun intended. But you're riding. You're not really, well, you are hanging from a cable. Okay. Good point. You know, anyway. They're an active senior group. So that's, I'll make that decision as soon as Mother Nature tells us whether she's going to be in or out. Is there extra like hot dogs for this one? Do you have like that? No.
Taking care of now.
Hot dogs, I'll take care of now. I just got a request from the Humane Society for next October, they want to bring their-
Speaking of hot dogs. Oh, my God, Mike, really?
He's going right into it. Pun intended, I guess, on this one. Humane Society contacted me and we're, they're going to bring back their Trails for Tales, which they've done at the park for a couple of years, but they, they're not doing it this year, but they are, they've asked for a request to come back to the park in October next year. So we're gonna be good with that.
Society came and was at townwide celebration. They had a couple of folks there.
Excellent.
Talk about what they're doing. So that was great.
So we're getting-
Maybe puppies. Who knows?
Lord, we're getting real, they're getting reconnected. We're getting reconnected with that. So that's a cool thing. I should have some more information by our next meeting on, as far as our background checks and fingerprint. We're in, still in progress. Bill and I just kind of worked on a little bit. The state is the state and they're asking us to do this hoop and that hoop. And we are jumping through them. And we are closer than we were two weeks ago, which is great. We actually have a number, which is fantastic. We just got to get it approved that I, whatever. We're, we're working through it.
Our fingerprint machine is up and running though.
So that's going to be huge. That's going to be perfect. Once we're ready, we're good. They get some time to practice. And then just as on the cusp, which is going to come sooner rather than later, on the 24th of October is the rec annual trick or treat on the trail that the middle school kids design and run right behind school. So that is Friday, the 24th, whereas the Halloween party, the Halloween parade is the 25th. I wasn't going to do it on the actual Halloween day, which is a Friday. I thought that's not really, let the kids go where they're going to go on, on the Halloween part itself. So that is in the works in conjunction with school because they, they run the activities. So that's always a big hit. So that's pretty much what I have. Unless you guys have any questions for me?
Okay.
Oh, one thing we do, I, so an FYI, we are losing tiles inside the pool towards the end of the season, right at the top. And I've been in contact with Patno, which is the only game in town. And he's going to swing by, he's got a job in the area. And he's going to swing by and look, but they're going to put us on the schedule for next spring to fix it, patch it, whatever we need to do. I don't know. I, it doesn't sound cheap. But it, I can't have people pulling tiles out of the pool. So just so you know, we, that really started the last couple of weeks of the season. And so I am in contact with them and, and we'll take care of that. So that's all I really got.
Questions for Mike Rowe? And you did make a contact at townwide celebration. You were telling me with, was it the seniors, the?
Ah, the, oh, yeah. And there should be on my email with the Vermont Aging.
Yeah.
Is that who it is?
Council on Aging.
Council on Aging. And so we'll start to reconnect and get them going and see what resources they can provide for us and we can provide for them.
Okay.
So one thing is, is just as a, when we have an election, is it okay to, if I go and have a signup sheet for, to sign up seniors for our group? Is that, like, what would be? Because I want to get people to sign up.
Think you can do, let me, let me
Okay.
Check. You, you can't do it within the area that's considered the polling area.
Okay.
But at the front tables as you-
Before you actually get in.
So we can talk because I'd really like to get more people signed up. Promoting it that way. And I just thought I'd throw that out there.
Circle article.
Awesome. Oh, there, I put that in the circle article to, to sign up. If they want, they can contact me. That is in my new article. Do I reach out and get ahold of me? And we'll put you on the list. So I did put that in there. All right. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mike. Dave Sears.
Doors.
Oh, yeah.
Bernie, get ahold of you yet?
Nope.
All right. I'll rewind because I was on the phone with him the next day. All right. I'll get after it.
Sorry.
Thanks, Mike. Yeah.
No problem.
Okay.
All right.
Dave Sears, Town Road Commissioner.
We've had an event for a couple of weeks. I know. You hate that, right? Being the bearer of bad news that I am. So we spent a few days doing some line striping, marking crosswalks and stop bars and that whole thing, which is a lot of fun. So we bought a new paint this year. It's a liquid thermoplast. Yes. We used, so I, the vendor came to me last year and said, I got this new paint and it's really good. It's supposed to last like three, four times longer than the water-based paint. So I said, that's great. I'd love to try it. He goes, I'll get you a pail. I said, good, because I'm not paying for it. If you want me to use it, like 170 bucks a gallon or a pail. So he gave us a pail and we used it last year. And it did hold up. It didn't hold up as advertised, but it held up better than water-based. So we bought five pails this year and we hit everything. I think if we get this stuff down two or three years in a row, then we can probably skip a couple of years. It does seem to hold up better. But so anyway, we spent a few days doing that. We kind of rehabbed our rat pile or our screen stuff. We did some bridge inspections, started last, late last week and finished up Monday. So the town has 10 bridges, qualified bridges for the state. The state inspects two, the long bridges, and we're supposed to inspect the other eight short bridges.
Okay. Trying to think of where they are, but.
So there's, I guess, see if I can remember them all. So there's the one on Stratton Road that we're getting ready to replace. Put an asterisk next to that because that's coming up in a second. Then there's Coal River Road. There's two on Coal River Road, one by Quality Lane and one just east of that.
By Pritchard.
Pritchard's, yeah. That one's coming up. Asterisk.
That's the next one.
Coming up.
I knew it would be.
Prospect Hill, East Pittsburgh Road. Then there's another one on Prospect Hill down by Route 7. And-
Middle Road? Is that one ours?
No.
Okay.
Well.
No.
It's not on the state's list of bridges for us.
Okay.
I think, I think that was my eight. But anyway, so in doing that, most of those are culverts that have been replaced fairly recently. They're not real super old. The one by Quality Lane is an old galvanized culvert that is showing some signs of wear, but it's still in relatively good shape. That's got some years left in it. Because we have a new show and tell. If, if Vanna would- Doesn't matter.
Okay.
Give me an A.
So that, that's-
That's lovely.
That's Prospect Hill, East Pittsburgh Road. So it's full of silt.
I was hoping that was ledge, but it isn't. It's silt, right?
It's silt. It's piles that are probably three and a half, four feet high. So I sent an email to Josh Carvahal, who's the Rivers and Streams guy, and I'm meeting him there Monday at 3:00 to see what he will let me do. He said, what, what are your plans for cleaning that? And I said, it depends on what you'll allow me to do. So.
I've never seen it from that scene.
Yeah. Yeah. So that's, that's-
That one's, is that 10 years old now?
It's in really good shape, other than it's full of mud.
Yeah.
And then the other one. This is the one, it's the concrete bridge on Coal River Road, just up from, this is the second one up from Quality Lane, the one with the kind of concrete guardrails that are all broken off.
Yep.
The bridge is actually in decent shape. This is the north end. And it's starting, I got some other pictures, but this is actually dilaminating here. Oops. And this is obviously the rebar that's showing through. So it's, we're going to have to do something with it at some point. The rest of the bridge is in really good shape. If we can do something with that, maybe get rid of those concrete guardrail things that are all broken and smashed off. So it'll be a project. It's going to be something beyond our scope.
Are there bridge grants available?
So put an asterisk next to that. We'll be there in just a second.
It's a structures grant.
Structures, right. Okay.
So the last thing.
They might make us put another box culvert in there. Take that bridge out.
That one, maybe. That, I mean, it's probably rehabable, honestly. Because there's not a lot of flow in it. And I mean, we, we walked through it and it's, I'm six foot and I was standing on top of debris in the bottom of it. And it was probably another two feet above my head. So you could probably go in there, chip all that stuff out, cut out all the ratty rebar, put in new stuff and put in some kind of form pump fill in there or float, like a flowable fill in there and something. I don't know. Haven't done that stuff in quite some time, but it's, it's probably rehabable without having to replace the whole thing. And today we, we paved what ditches we had open that we've had dug for the summer for culverts and different things. And now the asterisk. We got our structures grant for the Stratton Road culvert. The engineer's estimate on that was $508,000. The state gave us a grant of $200,000.
Wait, that seems short.
I have it right here if you'd like to look at it.
No, but what happened? They're usually more than that.
They're broke.
I think that's the cap on that particular structures grants, 200 grand, I think.
Is it? I don't know. I didn't see that anywhere. But so we need to determine what we want to do about that, which, you know, comes back to that.
Do we have to decide whether to accept the grant or not?
The grant daylights December 30th of 26th. So we have a little bit of time, but we could come up with at least 300 grand if we're going to proceed with that. Which we'll talk about at a committee meeting, which coincidentally, we have on Thursday.
Yeah. Okay. All right. So what else?
That's all the bad news I got. But as far as, you know, structures grants, it's, you know, you start getting into, you know, replacing something like that thing on Coal River Road. It's going to be obviously north of 200. But again, I think that could probably be rehabbed, really.
Would we get to look at that? Is that something out of Creek would do?
That would be something to talk to Robert about once we're done.
We get through-
Funding more cash.
Right now the-
Just so you know, I'm pretty much broken in engineering.
Wait, this is, I mean, we're only what, three months into the-
Well, yeah. We got this ball rolling way before the fiscal year started.
And we'll be talking a little bit under action items to, to set up our budget planning for next fiscal year. It's that time again. So those are things we'll want to make sure we cover. And do we know what your carryover is from June 30th, the last fiscal year?
I do. I have it written down in my office. I don't, it's 300 and, or 290, it's just shy of 300. It's like 293,000 or something like that.
Did we get into any of it for paving?
No, I, I ended up like $4,000 over.
But you did re, you redid your paving schedule.
I did. I changed. I backed out of a lot of it. And we ended up like four grand over in the, in the end.
So. But that would drain it, wouldn't it?
But we have to decide too, because we still have the issue whether or not we're going to look at purchasing an excavator for the town.
Oh, and we also have the issue, no, it's, that's a water sewer issue. I wish for the other, the south end.
Same, same committee, different page of it. On the other, the other side. But yeah, okay.
All right. Any other highway committee, you've got a meeting coming up, but any other things that you want to bring up? Any other Select Board member, any questions for Dave? Were we all set for the purchase of salt?
No. Generally, the, the state doesn't release that stuff until September, 1st of October, middle of October. So we're still a little ways out on that. But I have heard some rumblings that the state's not going to let the towns piggyback, which means the towns are going to have to go out to bid. I'm not sure if, how true that is. I've heard it, but I don't know. It hasn't been confirmed.
Saw the state put out a rebid for salt.
Right.
Week or two ago. So must be they got a number they didn't like.
Yeah.
Yeah, so.
Okay.
We'll, we'll have something.
Right.
If it's, we might buy snow blowers. Put that away.
Lease them out in neighborhoods.
Yeah. When I was a kid, they used to have sandboxes in every neighborhood. We can put a snow blower in every neighborhood.
All right.
Well, getting it off the road isn't your problem. It's when it freezes down.
Well, I know. But spring's coming.
Yeah. It comes every year.
Every year.
Thank you, Dave.
Thank you, guys.
Yep. Thanks.
Ed Dumas, Town Police Chief. Brady.
Hold on, I'll ask.
So which one do you want to start with?
Let's start with the thick one. So we had 157 calls and we had 104 stops. GP's back in town and we were busy up on, on Cortoline Road. Stopping the local residents for rolling through the stop sign. But a few other things.
So that's, is it 157 plus the 104? Or is it 157 total?
157 plus 104 stops. One fifty-seven plus a hundred and four stops. Uh, maybe not. I think it is though. About fifty per page. Yeah. Yes, that's right.
Yeah, so. Then busy up on Quarterline Road?
We have. We, a lot of it, we documented, we uh punched a case that we're up there doing a direct patrol, just uh so we can document our time. If uh the residents wonder, we can.
Yes.
Had some pretty good feedback in that. We did have a abandoned trailer motor home on Quarterline Road. I spoke to Mary about it. Uh, beginning of last week or, yeah. Anyway, so we're did a did a little law. Dave was gonna take and tow it for us, had a cost of. Was it two seventy-five a ton, something like that to get rid of that? But I went through the camper, found a name that I recognized who was in jail for. Something, so called the jail and they let me talk to him. He goes, yeah, that was parked at so-and-so's house. So I went to so-and-so's house and. Dave was gonna bring it back and they go, they had paid somebody to tow it. Who got rid of it on the town road. Spoke to that gentleman and he uh says. He said that he brought it to Albany. I said, well, you, I think you're a little short. If you could make that go away, if you don't, I got some paperwork for you. And low and behold, next day it was gone, so. Good thing.
Of the um. Situation up there in Quarterline Road. Any better? Or?
I know they had one instance where somebody was going around to somebody's house. Uh, and then I don't know, it was middle of the night or something of that nature. But I think it's gotten a little better.
And one of the two campers is gone.
Yeah, one of the two campers gone, the other, yeah, that was gone almost. I went up.
Like the next day.
Conversation with somebody, next day it was gone.
Yeah.
The other camper on Route seven, uh, south or seven, yeah, north. Heading to Pittsburgh, we had a phone call from the state on that. Uh, was gonna contact his boss to uh. See what they could do to get rid of it, because it's in there right away. And he agreed it wasn't there right away.
They asked if we would take care of it, right? And we declined politely and. Yeah.
I think they're figuring out that it's gonna cost a few thousand to get rid of, so they're kinda. Wondering too.
You 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 would think that. AOT would have a way to load that onto a trailer and bring it somewhere without having to hire somebody.
Yeah. I don't think they want the liability of it probably. Yeah, that too.
Well.
I think it's just the cost because it's full up. Just. Nasty. I mean, it's just junk.
Yeah, it's gotta go to a dump somewhere.
Yeah, it's gonna cost so much time to get rid of it. I'm curious who the towing company was that dumped it there? If I could find out. Because it didn't drive itself there. If I could find out. Yeah, we could make something happen. I don't have any information right now.
Patient and now somebody will talk about it.
Yeah.
The neighbors on across the carriage run, they're not too happy about it, but I've let them know. And the gentleman from uh Middlebury. Uh, was kind enough to take pictures of it and put it on Facebook and he's been having fun with it. And contacting the uh. AOT himself to wanna know what they're gonna do about it, so.
Good, okay, a little citizen pressure is a good thing.
Might get some action.
What's that?
I feel a little bit of public, you know, involvement might get them, you know.
Yeah.
We're coming up on um foliage season and that's a great advertisement for the state of Vermont is.
Yeah, somebody said. They should have a calendar of all the uh. Abandoned rigs or homeless setting up camp across the state over the course of the year could go from. You know, January to December, I'm sure they could find. Oh. A number of uh. Plenty of stuff on our calendar, right? You run our room for the actual calendar, just be a book of pictures.
You wouldn't have any place for the days and the months and weeks.
Yeah.
Well, two questions on this section here.
Uh, no, thanks. I, thanks for the increased patrolling there, Quarterline, that's, yeah.
So the other.
It's gonna take that kind of pressure.
Yes.
Make it uncomfortable for. People who don't wanna be seen.
Right, yeah. And the other thing is uh on this one here, this one, we have uh. The. Southern of the town, we have a thirty-five percent of our cases there. It's steadily going down since January. Not sure what's gonna happen with uh. Cold weather. Voucher program through the Great Vine, we've spoken to some people who are in the know, I guess. And they were told absolutely no, my Cortina is not gonna get vouchers, well, I'll believe it when I see it, so. But I hope not.
Yeah, well, they venture to the mission. We threw eight of them out the other day. They were. Doing drugs and selling drugs in the parking lot.
We have had some uh homeless camps uh. Various town properties, we've spoken to one, but they're, it's like a small city they got set up, so it takes some time to get rid of it. We try to be somewhat kind, find a new spot. Preferably out of all in town. But they like to be conveniently located close to a store so they can.
Yeah, well.
Get their stuff.
But they can go to the rental park.
Um, questions for our chief?
In this, we could, well, we have the Diamond Run stuff, but.
Oh, yes.
Um, a couple of times that I've. Been on the south end after parts, when you go in that the mall's main entrance right opposite four. On, as you're going up on the left, I always notice cars parked right in there. Is there a little?
Yes.
Group encampment there?
Yep. I dealt with it today, okay, somebody up there.
Yeah, I, you know, I didn't, I didn't know if that's just part of whatever, but I, the other day when I was down there, there was like two cars here and I could see people. Stay, so I didn't know if.
I will be glad when I tear up all that tire. There's also problems at night, people are using it as a racetrack.
Were you here when I mentioned the Act two fifty?
I did hear that, yes, I'm excited to get that done. Another thing is, well, Ted was able to get a hold of McGovern, uh. The technician finally answered him and they sent us the program. Which Ted loaded on his computer, was able to reprogram the new cruiser, so. Everything at this point in time is working, so now at this time I have the the invoice here, I'll send it to Carrie if she'll get paid next two weeks cycle.
Okay, did we?
You guys already approved a ticket out of uh the the Cortina.
Okay.
On that one.
Okay.
I'll let her know.
All right, good.
Think that's all I have.
Um, we do have a letter that we had Bill draft and it's here for our signature and it was to. Uh, Joe Anthony B A I, uh. And it concerned. We were reminding him of his obligation under the current Act two fifty permit to provide security at the mall site. Um, and we talked about the numerous complaints we've received. Um, and we do have a board meeting on September twenty-third and we're asking him to attend so we can talk about it. The permit, the draft permit that's been um proposed. Does specifically say all conditions of land use permit. One R O six six one and amendments are in full for force and effect. Except as further amended herein, so that policing requirement is still there.
Okay, good.
It's it's there and will be there when this one's approved, so.
The the problem is that. I think they just wanna be done with it at this point in time.
Yep.
Uh, nobody's willing to, we had complaints of. Best from there, people going in the building and whatnot, but. Give them a trust best notes, nobody wants to sign anything, so therefore at least us holding our hands someplace and.
Yeah.
Where, same thing, I spoke to uh security company. They stopped my office today, uh. Same thing, they said they wanted to do something, but they don't really wanna do anything, so I think they just.
Okay.
Everybody's, everybody's waiting for this thing to be torn up and.
Yes.
Put away.
Yeah, that will help, but. There will still be stuff and it's, this letter reminds them it's still their obligation. So um you have, this is item number one in your packet. And if we approve it, we all get to sign it.
Maybe we already did approve it, actually.
I think we probably did.
I'm moved to prove it again.
All right, motion's made to prove it again, second.
Second, you just forgot to hang around long enough to sign it.
I think that was the problem. Okay, um, all in, any discussion on the letter? If not, all in favor, please say aye. Aye, motion carries five zero.
I just, you know, I hope that. Once the building's gone and their reclamation process is done, they take some kind of steps. To keep people out of there.
They're gonna post it. Thoroughly.
Yeah.
There's no question that that they're not welcome there. And then they're gonna have to sign trust best. To uh make sure the people.
You know, I I still think I'm a firm believer that until they get the Walmart building up, they should close that one entrance and have just one.
I agree.
Yeah, and and make it more difficult for people to just come and go as they please. Maybe once they do this reclamation, because. What I see is people up there just having a grand time with their. Four-wheel-drive vehicles just running through it and just raising heck.
Yeah, hold that thought and if Mr. Anthony comes in at our.
We'll make sure that, because I think they're gonna have.
Chris um Clark to weigh in on that to make sure that if he needs to, he can get the fire trucks up.
Because the, the um. Arena is the only viable building there that's worth. Um.
Saving.
Anything, yeah, anything, any, you know. Concerted effort on our fire department, any risk to the firemen, the rest of it isn't worth anything other than to just make sure it doesn't spread.
Right.
But. It'll be interesting to see what happens once they start this demolition process.
Uh, we did approve tonight the um payment of the. Um, the guns?
Yes.
And um the.
Holsters, probably.
Yeah, okay.
We're lacking two uh. Right-thinking people holsters, left-handed holsters.
Okay.
Other than that. Somebody don't make a lot of them.
Um, so I I had a question that's come up. JP sent us an email, I think you sent it to all of us. Concerning a uh cha- uh.
Printer. Printer for his cruiser.
Yes, it's more than that, yes, it's the, it's like a, so question, did we upgrade everything on in all of the cruisers?
It's got. We got this, I I know. I think three of the cruisers have the printers right now.
E-ticket equipment, that's what it is.
What is it?
The state's e-ticket program.
Correct.
And do we have that in all of our cruisers and what's the deadline for complying and switching over?
I'm not sure what the deadline is like.
Okay. Um, so I'm kind of wondering, let's see, total cost is. Um, for the computer, it's twenty-four hundred, for the docking station, it's eleven hundred. And for the pedestal, it's eleven hundred. Um, and. And I'm just wondering if we're gonna see a similar request from the police department?
Think we already got ours on a grant a year or two.
Yeah.
And so we've been waiting, Ted has one in his truck, I think. Uh. The other officer, Dumas, he has one in his car. Not sure Jimmy has one or not. I know we have, we have at least three or four of them to put in the cruisers.
And they're not in there yet?
Uh, I know Ted has one, Ted's are are, he's an installer, so he's been busy. But I think we, I know we have at least three of them, I'm quite sure.
Okay, Ken, and and I I haven't talked with anybody about this. I haven't talked with JP and I haven't talked with Matt on the police committee, but.
He is on, Mary.
Yes, JP is on, so he, feel free to join in, um.
Mary, those prices Ted was able to get, those are state prices, state purchase prices. He's able to get those prices and that's what he, uh, those are the prices he was able to get for the cruisers that are outfitted. Uh, at the PD.
So they're all. So I guess my question is, can we use, if if there, if the equipment is here but not installed on some of the cruisers? Can we use it on yours? Um, because you're the one doing. A lot of the enforcement right now and then.
You're mixing two budgets at that point, though.
Probably, yes. Well, that's that's part of the question too.
Yeah.
But JP is. Not only our second constable, but he's also a sworn special officer. And when he's out doing speed control, which which budget? Which, which is he doing, JP?
It's a, I think it's, I'm in both, I wear both hats when I'm out there. The the special officer designation was if, because we go through the city so much. If we're working and a violation occurs right in front of you, you're kinda obligated to address it. Um, but I do feel when I'm doing the the uh speed patrol that I do that. Both as the constable and as a special officer for the department. The, as you can see, the, there's no lack of work out there for speed. And right now, writing tickets is like having a typewriter versus a computer. The the, if the equipment they already bought, Mary, is dedicated to the police department's cruisers. That's why it can't be installed in mine.
Um, that, so that leads us to if we, if we approve this. Then that's gonna wipe out your equipment line. Where do we get the rest of the money? And of course, we turn and we look to the. Police. You know. Depreciation fund.
It's, well, no, I had a thought on that, Mary, because my, the, the revenue that's generated from the tickets. Could possibly be used to pay for this. It's, it's in the general.
It it, the tickets go into the general fund and yours, yours goes in the general fund. But we've never.
So.
Yeah.
You know, I I talked to JP a little bit about this after I saw that and and I did a little bit of research, so the, in the last fiscal year. Um, the ticket revenue to the town is about thirteen thousand eight hundred dollars. Um, that's part of our income.
In the general fund.
In the general budget and looking at this request. We had it more income into the general budget on a, on a pretty regular basis, and we do those numbers. The ticket income is usually averaged at about fifteen thousand. And we generated about thirty. So I was, you know, in my mind, I was thinking, well, JP's right, and most of the tickets, um, they're, then. I think he should have the equipment. I think it'll make it a lot easier. The other kind of. Um. Benefit of this is this will will help Lynette because there's less.
She'll be able to read the writing at that point.
We should be able to read it, um, it, I I don't know how the system works exactly, but. When a ticket is entered through this e-ticket process, um, doesn't, does it go right to the state? Or does it go through? Goes to traffic, goes right to traffic court.
The thing about the e-reader is he can, I, there's a, I, it can. Scan them and it auto fills all the information.
Right.
And so.
Yeah, I I'm not questioning whether he should have it. My question is, it, which fund, okay?
So it's, it's going in his personal pickup.
Yeah.
It's not going in a town police cruiser.
Yeah.
So in my opinion, it has to come out of the constable budget, equipment budget line.
And the, it will for the first amount, let's see if.
I mean, if we, and and if. Staying true to the way we've.
Two thousand dollars.
Yeah, so.
Is what we've budgeted. JP, have you used any of that this year?
So uh, I did put in for some dog control uh equipment. That was paid the last time around because I'm having a lot more dog complaints, especially down the end of Ramberry Road. Um, and I. Think that's about, and I think that would probably come out of my cons, unless I, I don't think I had an equipment line for the health officer.
Um, I'll check, no, I was, I was wrong. You have second constable is twenty-five hundred dollars in your equipment line. So, um.
If we.
There could be enough.
Well, if we stayed true to our. Practice, if we're. Buy stuff and overspend, we keep it in the line it's supposed to be in.
Yes.
So the equipment line would show a deficit for this fiscal year.
Right.
And. It would probably be more than offset by the income that's generating. Either, you know, because our our general. Either, you know, because our our general budget usually generates more income, so so
Yeah.
We won't be short at the end of the year, but
No, we we aren't usually anyway.
You know, so I I think it would be
Going forward, do we keep it this way with the constables separate and in general?
I think we, I think we have to.
Department separate? Well, I'm I'm posting
That makes sure there's plenty of communication on budgeting so we know like
Yeah.
The state's imposing a requirement, it's gonna require replacements, you know, we might be thinking about it for the police department, but I don't want to forget about our constables that they have to do the same thing.
We we're pretty good about it. We have mandatory trains we have to do. We let Mike and JP know that
Another note, since you brought this up. Well,
Okay.
We just replaced all the sidearms.
Yes.
Including our two constables through the police budget.
Yeah.
Were they originally purchased through the police budget, you know?
I believe so.
Yeah.
So we were
We wanted to keep everybody
The same, so you guys, yes.
Uniform as far as
Because if you're in a situation together, you can
Correct.
Magazines are all the same, everything, yeah. So, but I mean
So we've got the, uh, we've got this weird budget thing. I mean, we we can deal with it. These these amounts aren't huge. I understand that there's revenue from ticket ticket sales.
Right. You know, and if this if this makes JP's job easier and Lynette's job easier, that's that's a good thing. Um, and to Kurt's point, because this is not going into a town-owned vehicle, anything the constables do or their own vehicles is probably would make sense to keep it within their budget rather than try to go
Yeah.
Then then we would have, okay, so what does the police department own and what does the constable? So maybe that's a cleaner line to keep it all.
Yeah, well, I I think to to Matt's point, and and, you know, we'll entertain a motion to move this along, but to Matt's point, if if the constables could talk with the police when budget time comes, so that when we're purchasing things that the whole group of you needs, um, we we can take advantage of group discounts and all of that stuff. That would be helpful. Okay.
Not overlook some, make sure our equipment line is big enough.
Right.
Because you know, like, all of your stuff, like all of your cameras, all of your equipment, it's all interchangeable and it's all the same, right?
Correct. And also, on another note, when we have a police committee meeting, getting close to budget here.
Yes.
We'd like another line item. Ted and I were talking about contract items. So we have all these contracts with the tasers, with the with our uh watch guards, uh, like in our in our uh printers, uh, pop ears, all that.
Yeah.
We have all these contracts items that have to come out. It would be cleaner if we had one more line, just to call it contract items and we
Check with Bill. It may take more than one line, but if you wanna so because there's contract for computers and contract for tasers and contracts, so it could be several lines, but could you let the police department know?
Absolutely.
What we, what the general side has, and then you can craft it accordingly. So, yeah, I think that's a good idea to
Alright.
We can anticipate a little better.
We'll sit down with Bill here and get something lined up.
Yeah, that's right. You're in two different buildings these days. Um, do we want to do JP's request when JP comes up, or do we want to do it now? Since we've talked about it.
Here in the business, I guess.
Pardon?
We're here in the business, I guess.
All right, is that a motion?
Sure. Don't move.
Second. All right, Kurt's moved to purchase the e-tickety equipment uh for our second constable uh, at a cost of twenty-four hundred plus eleven hundred plus eleven hundred. How much is that?
Forty-six.
Forty-six hundred dollars, uh, the money to come out of the second constable equipment line, knowing there will be a deficit.
Yep.
All right.
Just like I said it.
All right, any discussion? And Sharon seconded that, yeah.
Yep.
Not all in favor, please say aye.
Alright.
Um, opposed? Uh, JP, you'll need to get an invoice to carry for that, please.
Okay, thank you very much for your support. You've taken me from a typewriter to a computer.
Well, keep up the good work, JP. I like seeing you on grocery.
Carbon paper wasn't a bet, really. Okay.
Have a good night, thank you.
Thank you, JP. Anything else for our police chief? Okay, thank you very much. And we signed the letter to the mall, and that's in there about policing. All right, Marcia Choffee, head Lister. No Marcia. Okay, we do have I'm not sure what these are, but there are some things on my desk. Um, it looks like information concerning um, Lister and Assessor certifications, which are coming up, requirements that will be implemented as of January first, twenty twenty-six. And do you get folks all have it? Yeah, okay, good. So that's background information for you. And if you have questions, maybe you can catch Marcia um, the next select board meeting. We got a little time and a question may be whether um, there's something that we need to include in the Lister's budget to take care of this. So, okay. Next on the agenda, Chris Clark, Town Fire Chief.
Uh, good evening.
Good evening.
Uh, just one thing, I got a new application tonight. Um, I forgot to leave it there so you could sign it, but if you approve it, I can drop it off tomorrow so you guys can sign it whenever you're there. Uh, his name is Zachary Rice. He is twenty-eight years old. Uh, he lives in the city. And he does have experience, so um, if you guys accept him, he'll be a senior member and we'll get him trained up with the way we do stuff here and ready to go.
Right, he passed all of your checks, okay?
He did, yes.
Good, all right. Is there a motion?
Don't move.
Second.
Motion's made by Sharon, seconded by Kurt to approve Zachary
Rice.
Rice. Is it R E I S or R I C E?
Uh, R I C E.
Okay, um, as a senior firefighter with the Rutland Town Fire Department. Further discussion? If not, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries five zero and there'll be something here for us to sign, because I think we usually all sign these, don't we? Yeah.
Well, the other next
Oh, that's right, we'll be here next Tuesday, yeah.
Perfect, I'm there.
Okay. Anything else, Chris?
That's all I got.
Um, I don't know if you've heard, but we were talking a little bit about the letter concerning policing at the mall, and we've signed it and we are inviting Joe Anthony to come visit with us on the twenty-third of September, which is our next full, you know, regular select board meeting. The question came up about whether we make a request to close one of the entrances. And I I wanted to give you a heads up. I seem to remember the fire department had a position on that in the past, and I can't remember which it was, to close or to leave open.
Um, as long as they leave the one open by the car wash side, I'm fine with that.
Okay.
They can close the other one.
Okay.
We did go up there for car fire the other night. The kids like to uh drive their cars up that grass hill, like you're going to the hockey rink, and one of the cars caught on fire at the top of the hill. So that was kinda neat. And we all, we all would have tried it when we were kids, you know it.
Yeah, well.
Yeah, maybe.
Didn't didn't set the woods on fire.
No.
Lucky.
We did get lucky on that, but other than that, haven't been up there, but yeah, they can close one side if they, if they want to.
Okay, that's helpful, thank you. Um, anything else for our town fire chief? And we do need to have a fire committee meeting. Well, we need to have committee meetings anyway in anticipation of starting the budget process, but we'll talk further about that.
Okay.
Chris, so regarding the flagpole and and that work, um I don't believe Dave is ready to pour this week, so we're gonna talk about that on our meeting Thursday morning. And there's a little bit of coordination I'm working on to help out with that, so more information to come, okay?
All right, I had a, I know Bob Carrera, that's why I had it all planned for Thursday, but I I canceled it, so I'm just gonna wait for whenever Dave's got cement coming.
Okay, yeah, because I was I was gonna try to see if we can locate um, or beg, borrow, steal some help from the folks up the road building for one of those telescoping uh work lists to set that pole with.
Yeah, okay.
Yep, so
I'm here right now, so whenever you're ready, we're ready.
Okay, alrighty.
Thank you.
Anything else for Chris? Thank you, chief, appreciate it.
Have a good one.
You too. Carrie Clark, Town Clerk and Treasurer.
Good evening. There's really not a whole lot to report tonight. Um, we're in the middle of collecting taxes for the first installment, and that due date is tomorrow, so um, I don't really have anything to report other than um, at this point, at the end of the day, today, we're up to about seventy-eight percent of our um, first installment, so keep the tax payments coming. And that's pretty much all I have.
Okay. Questions for our Town Clerk and Treasurer? No. Okay, thanks for the reminder too, taxes are due tomorrow, folks, so, and to all those who have paid already, thank you very much. Okay, next, Mike Delahanty, not not on. Joe D'Nardo, Public Safety Building Clerk, I think you've already reported.
Very good.
All right. John Paul has already reported. Barbara Noyes-Pulling, Town Planning Commission.
Yes.
Good evening.
Good evening. Getting the camera set up here. Um, regarding the subdivision bylaw, the planning commission, the group hasn't been too uh um, happy, crazy about some of the examples from from other towns. Um, but fortunately, um, the planner at the regional planning commission who works on on bylaws had some time, and he he put together a pretty, a pretty good template. Uh, it's got lots of bones to it, so um, hopefully we can start with that very soon and and get things rolling. Um, there's a couple of things we might need to add. Um, we need to decide whether we want to keep boundary line adjustments. Um, at uh, if we want to, it, right now, they're in subdivision coordinates. Um, but some towns have them separate, so that'll be a discussion. And um, a lot of towns and Logan at the Regional Planning Commission, I think, left off the appeal period uh that comes with subdivision decisions. So uh, couple of things to consider, and um, he did, like I said, a pretty good template and included some questions, some leading questions uh for the group um, as they review this. So that should be good.
Barbara, are we, are we contracting with the regional commission for this work, or is this just one of the things that the commission is able to do for us?
Yeah, I think it's the latter.
Um, right.
Yeah, yes, uh, so he gave us a good head start, so definitely, I I think, uh, that's that's true, and so he had some time that recently freed up on his part. Um, the other thing I was gonna talk about, which um may be done by the Regional Planning Commission, or we might want to go for a state, a municipal planning grant, is the town plan. Um, we're two years out, um, and you know, uh, even even though the period uh for come doing new plans is eight years now, um, time does fly. And and the two years is, two years out is a good time to kind of decide what you want to do with the town plan. If if you want an extensive rewrite, or if you want um, just to go in and update data and, you know, maps maybe and things like that. So, um, I hope we will have that discussion on Thursday night. Um, to get an idea from the 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 Town Planning Commission, wh- what they'd like to do. And uh, and then uh, we could, we could still have time to go for a municipal planning grant this year. Uh, the deadline is November, I believe. Um, that comes with a ten percent match. And those usually, those usually cost about seven or eight thousand dollars total in that vicinity. Uh, but if we just go in and and update things, uh, the Regional Planning Commission uh has time to do that.
Okay.
Yeah. Yeah, I mean, the two years for the town plan goes fast. You know, a lot of towns spend like a year or more on this, and then you've got the public hearings. Planning Commission has a public hearing, the Select Board has a public hearing and all that.
So it sounds like the Planning Commission's gonna decide whether it's a major rewrite and therefore go for the planning grant, or whether it is a update the materials that are in it, and the Regional Commission can handle that. We would need to know those, I think, because we're starting into the budget process, so we will be shortly, so good, good timing on your part, so if the commission could make that decision, that'd be terrific. My my sense is, we did a pretty comprehensive rewrite last time. Um, that was my sense, yeah.
Mm-hmm, yeah, we did. And and then um, and then we didn't, we opened it up again for the enhanced energy plan. And and that's, that's the wild card here. Um, we've lost the person at the Regional Planning Commission who was doing those. And so um, we don't have anyone up to speed on that yet, but we've got two years. And and that's assuming we want to continue the enhanced energy plan.
Right, okay.
As part of the town plan.
Yeah, that's what gave us a seat at the table in case of act, um, section four, two forty-eight hearings, right?
Yeah, and also it mapped out areas of town that we we thought are most conducive to alternative energy.
Right, okay.
And which ones
Yeah. Okay. All right, well, thank, questions for Barbara? Nope, guess not. Thank you very much, appreciate it.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay, next up, Larry Delveneri, and he is not on. Next is Bill Sweet, Town Administrator. Good evening, Bill.
All right, um so I have a couple of things to go over. Um, on your desks is a flyer from the Regional Planning Commission talking about um, MERP, Community Capacity Mini Grant. Um, this goes back to a grant we applied for a couple of years ago, which we were successful in getting, uh, which we have, we still have not spent. Uh, it is for four thousand dollars. Our intent was to get the energy audits for the buildings, which we did, and to then apply for the grant to to implement those things. And then the consultant was gonna be used to help us with that implementation. We did not get the grant, so we know, so the
Part two.
Yeah, so the intended use of these funds did not come to fruition, so we still have it. Um, and we need to use it by next year, or it will just go away.
Next year when?
I boo, I think he said September, October.
Okay.
So we, we do it about a year.
All right.
Um, so there there's a couple of things on here that that could be helpful. Um, some of the direct mailings or or, you know, we can um, get racked for efficiency program handouts, things like that. So some of these things are directly tied to those energy audits.
Yeah.
Um, but we don't, we don't have that, so.
We had a, an energy committee as part of the select board, um, and then we kind of let it go. Um, there wasn't, I, it was really useful when we were talking about maybe doing a municipal or either a municipal project, but more likely it either a municipal project, but more likely it, and, um, solar project up on the, up in North, Northfield. Um, but that didn't pan out, Northwood, yeah. Taking over North, all right. Um, so I don't know, this is here, we can think about maybe.
We saw some time and, and, but it, I mean, we have it, there's no match to it, so it's, it's there if we wanna use it for something.
And if not, we lose it.
Yeah.
It's an energy-related grant, so.
Yeah.
Yes, there, there, there's towns that have hosted uh, events and, and you can pay for the materials and things like that from it, there's towns that have purchased some, uh, some residential like thermal imaging to people to go find heat loss in their houses, things like that, that people, we can, we could loan out, so there's there are some different things to do, so it would, you know, be good to use it, we've had it for, it's been out for a couple of years, but every, every six months, I get an email reminder for them saying, hey, do you have an update for us? I'm like, yeah, there's an update.
I wonder if, I don't know, for four thousand dollars, we could get somebody to we had talked about, like, maybe possibly doing s- solar on some of the buildings.
We did talk about that.
And I wonder if four grand would get us some information on the feasibility, or which buildings would be, you know, we'd have to stay away from this one with a slate roof, but I think we were talking the highway garage and I don't know, some other ideas about doing solar to help with that, and, cuz when we got turned down on the, the old, uh, landfill site, you know, there were some other ideas.
Yeah, the CVPS person was talking, Green Mountain Power was talking to us about it, I think, you and I were both there.
Yeah, we were, so I'm wondering if that was, I mean, there's a lot of consultant things, I wonder if that would be something, I don't even know who to you would look into to ask, would do something like that, but.
Maybe it calls to Green Mountain Power to find out who's out there as a consultant, who might be able to take a look at maybe town property generally, not just buildings, although it's probably a whole lot easier to put them on the buildings.
I think for.
Do it just an inventory, what if we got what might be useful, kind of?
Sure.
Yeah.
We can, we can give it a try, absolutely, no problem. Um, and I think that's everything, it was on your desk from, from me. Uh, it, so you, you covered number one in the packet, number two in the packet uh, is follow-up, um, as you remember, early, uh, early on, you appointed me as the, uh, the Ethics Liaison for the state. Uh, and as part of that, uh, there was training to go out to everybody, uh, that was for, um, they said, um, municipal officials and, and, uh, municipal officers. Uh, so I have sent out, um, emails to, to everybody, and there is the list of uh, who hasn't, who has not, who has yet to do it, uh, it is, the due date in the statute is September twenty-fifth, the due date for the, for the Municipal Ethics Commission was initially September twenty-fifth. Um, and then it goes, um, a couple of years, you have a couple, every three years thereafter, so, um, the, and then also included there is who the statute lists as a municipal officer.
Okay, so those who are in the on the first page, those who are above the box.
Yep.
Have taken it and we're all good, okay. Those who are in the box, they need to do it.
I don't have a record of completion.
Oh, okay, so they might have done it, but.
Might have done it.
There was a weird little thing at the end.
Yes.
I missed it.
Yeah.
That you missed that weird little thing at the end?
Yes, and so I've gotta go back and try this again.
Okay.
I talked to Bill about it, and pretty common sense, it's not really difficult, but I don't know what I missed, but cuz I know he told me, he said, you know, Bill said at the end, you know, he'd put his email in and they'll send the certificate, yada, 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 and I never came upon that.
Right, and I'm, I know what you mean, because I was confused by it, but apparently I pushed the right button at the end, so.
Yep. Uh, if, if, if anybody wants to come over and, and it, it doesn't take a long time, and they say, I think, if they say it takes like forty-five minutes.
Yeah.
It, it takes like, yeah, so.
Forty-three minutes on.
We're unhappy to have, to have, set something up, if people wanna come over and, and, and do it here, you know, but there's, th- this, this is what it was set out in, in the statute, so this is the, this is the progress report, um, and yeah, so we're, we're, we've got, we've got a few left, uh, to go, but that's, that's, and the, the due date they had was September twenty-fifth, so that's.
So, is, is there any discussion, so what happens if somebody doesn't do it?
The, in, in the statute, it refers the town back to its, in, in, it's to its personnel policy. For, for compliance with, with things like, like this, so it does not.
Except our personnel policy doesn't apply to elected officials.
There is a real, what do you call that, um?
Well, I mean.
That's twenty-two.
Not really, because, I mean, elected officials, their, their boss is the electors, so.
I'm just, you know, I was.
We wouldn't have any authority anyway, really.
So that would be a good question for the Ethics Commission, is to ask them, so, if an elected official doesn't do this, what are you gonna do?
Right.
Well, what is, is there a penalty or?
I think there's anything they can do.
Let's us make it a little easier, can you find a date when you can offer to just have people come in and have some popcorn and soda? Put the thing up on the screen.
It might need something other than soda.
We're just gonna keep it as soda, though, coffee.
I mean.
Yeah.
We can sit right here, put it up there and all.
Absolutely can.
I think that's a better idea.
Absolutely fine, like, I, 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 that, that, I've.
That was my suggestion back in March.
We've offered that since, since the beginning, so, uh, this started the beginning of the year, and, um, so I, I, I've got no, no problem, I, I can, we can, we can do that, we can knock out as many as people want to, it's, it's, it's not difficult. I, Dakota's on the list, I don't know, I don't know Dakota's last name, so.
Harvey.
Harvey.
Yeah.
Okay.
Um, okay, uh, but yeah, all the cemetery commissioners are on that list also. All right, so I will, um.
Yes, a lunchtime thing.
I will put out.
Fit in.
I will make it, I will try to make it.
In the morning, I don't know.
I'll try to make it as easy as I can.
Okay, thank you.
Probably not. Thank you.
You're welcome.
You're welcome.
Uh, and um, so you'd, you'd a couple of things off on the, on the, uh, on, uh, agenda, but, um, the generator in Center Rutland has been repaired, there was an issue with some internal components that we, we're getting water in this generator, it is, this one over here has caused more issues and, and repairs.
This is at the fire station?
Yeah, and the only difference is this one, this one's a propane generator, every other one's diesel, and this one is causing more issues than all the rest of them put together. So the last repair was seventeen hundred dollars because there was water inside of it again.
Where, where is water, in the oil or in the fuel?
Yes.
Both, or you don't know, both?
Yes, both. And they, and they can't, Brookfield was here the day and they, we cannot figure out why, how it's getting in there.
So it, do you think it's, uh, external water? You know, like when it rains, or is it condensation?
Well, they're, they're.
They really know.
So the only other thing we can do is, is we have to run a circuit out there, but, um, a run, uh, a heater, they, they installed a heater. Couple of years ago, a heater was installed, there was someone who was going to take care of getting the outlet wired and it never occurred. So, that may fix it, but we don't know, so. Scan, we get.
The other idea is maybe we should look at making that one the same as the rest and making it a diesel one.
There was a question, I was talking, I was, I, I was over there the other day in the, the, with, with the tech, and he said, i- it could be the fact that it's sitting, it's, it's basically ground level, he says, most of them are up off the ground, this one is right at ground, the pad was poured, basically at, at grass level, so when the snow piles up, it piles up against it, and we don't know.
Haven't had any snow in several months.
But it's, no, but it's, this, this is, this is.
But it hasn't been serviced.
It hasn't been serviced, like.
I hope it's a lot of months.
Yeah, so we, but you know, I was, I was over there and we kind of, we found it was locked out because it had tried to start and tried to start and it, it failed. And so it was, had, it had, had issues, so it's just, I, I don't know why, but this, this one, the only thing different is it's, it's, it's propane, but I don't really, doesn't make sense why that would be the deciding factor, but.
Propane supplier?
Well, so, I did, uh, Irving was there yesterday to do their leak test, because they, they're taking over, they're taking over now, so, uh, they did their leak test, talked to the technician about it, and he's like what, he's, he was skeptical it'd be water from the propane side of it, he's like, if water got in there, it'd be frozen solid, because the propane's gonna freeze any of the water there, so there's just a lot of, a lot of questions with, with not a lot of good answers at the moment.
They like to know where, where the water is and how it's getting in.
But they, when the last, I mean, there's, the oil in these things is pretty, pretty big, and the last time they took out a lot, when they did oil change, a lot, a lot of water came in.
Yeah.
If I could, if I could for a second, yeah, I've got, um, a, a fourteen KW generator at my house that's propane, and it has a heater on the, uh, propane line, and I have never had a problem with water. And it's, it's from Brookfield, it's a, it's, you know, I'm, it's probably not the same generator, same size as what's over there, but um, I do have a heater on my propane line, and I've never had a problem with water.
So if we get the heater hooked up and.
That may help.
And it may, and.
Maybe, maybe this winter, pay a little bit more attention, make sure it doesn't get buried in snow and shovel out around it and keep an eye on it.
Funny that, you know, because I don't know how water would get into the oil.
We don't know either.
Through the fuel, the, the fuel side.
Yeah.
They're, they're separated.
Yeah.
So even if there was, you know, it's got, yeah, and that volume of water. I'm, you know.
But there was an internal, and I think, I think the bill was in the order, there was an internal, internal regulator, they had, it was like, it was seventeen hundred dollars to replace it, cuz it just was it was all, all full of water.
So the, the regulator for the propane?
Inside, in, an internal one.
Internal.
Yeah, it's not, not, it's, cuz there's one outside, and then there's one, there's one inside, and, and it's the inside one, so I, I can, I can try and get.
Cuz the heater, normally the heaters are just a block heater and it keeps the coolant warm. Now, maybe that would solve the problem, they're two separate.
Short, short of, short of replacing the generator, there's really not much else we can do, like, it's, we've done.
Try the heater, and then if that doesn't solve the problem, I think we ought to look at it.
I will, um, I will work on getting electricians, see if I can get one to do that for us.
Make sure it doesn't get buried up in the snow in the winter, I wonder if it gets covered and it runs and it gets hot and the water runs into it.
It'd be, I mean, it runs, it runs every week, it's supposed to run every week, so it's possible. Um, I mean, we can, we can look at trying to elevate it. You know, unbolt it from the pad and, and put risers or something.
Be an issue.
What's that?
The wiring.
Well, but while the wiring comes up to a box, the box is connected by another cable into it, so that's less of a, less of a problem, the propane line would need to be adjusted, so I mean, yes, there's.
Yeah.
But.
Is the diesel ones, the fuel tanks underneath it, so.
Right, right, so this, that, that's, that, and that's the difference, is the rest of them have a built-in, built-in platform underneath it, so we should buy a tank and put it, just leave it on top of it, like, so, it's, it's there, it's working, it's all set. But it's just that one has just been a consistent.
All right, well, let's get the heater hooked up.
I, I will do that.
All right.
Um, and then the other generator, the school's generator is gonna have its second, uh, maintenance trip, regular maintenance trip tomorrow, they're coming out to do that, so that that, and that one's been, that one's been good. Uh, uh, new labor law posters are out, there, we, we have a service that we get them from automatically now, and uh, they arrive today, so in all the mailboxes in, uh, in the office is a new poster for everybody for, so it's every department has one, police, fire, rec, transfer station here, all have them. Um, on your desk, you do have the agenda for September sixteenth. Um, if you, I don't know if you wanted to add anything to it, um, I was going to publish it tomorrow.
There is some other business that we keep adding.
Uh, but they're most, it's all with, with Kevin, so it's covered under that, you know, as long as you say whatever, as long as you say whatever you're going in for, it's gonna be fine. If there was anything, anything efficient, like on the record business you wanted to put on there, if you're just good with that, so.
Yeah, the only thing we have is to sign that application, but that's, doesn't need to be on the, we've already voted.
Yeah.
The application for the firefighter.
Oh, oh, yeah, that's, we voted on that, and I, usually Carrie will just have it in her office and we can sign it there.
If it's got any other business owners, so we're good.
Yeah, we try, try and specify it, and that's.
Try to specify.
Try to keep it less generic.
Talked about something that somebody wanted to be here and talk to us about.
That's, that's why, yeah, we try and keep it less generic, yeah.
Right.
Um, so if you think of something, we can add it, and, 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 I, I haven't published it yet, but I'm, I was gonna do it tomorrow, just if you had anything to, to put on there for to, that you don't, you don't wanna talk about. Um, here, let's see here, um, the eighteenth, we have our, uh, sidewalk meeting with the property owners that all be affected by the new shared use path. So.
This is JP Sidewalk?
Yes, uh, so they, uh, all, everybody affected was sent a certified letter telling them they have property that's going to be affected, and I have all of the receipts back, so they've all gotten them to show up to the meeting, uh, it's gonna be here, Stephanie will be here, uh, and, uh, be a good, 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 so each of them also got uh, a copy of the map of their affected section of the sidewalk, so they could see it ahead of time. Um, and, uh, so they're all set for that. Um, I have had, uh, people from Heather Lane gotten ahold of me, and the, the prevailing preference is, they were, they're asking about, would we just make it continue Crossman Drive? And, uh, some said Crossman Drive, some, some said Crossman Drive Extension. Um, if we do that, it would be extension, because if we just simply continued Crossman Drive, there are houses at the end of Crossman Drive now that are on the left, which would then become on the right. So we'd actually have pending addresses on Crossman Drive as well, if we create a Crossman Drive Extension, they are left alone, so that would be a a better option.
Um, but. Is that most of the neighbors that you?
I've heard from several, yeah, yeah, so, um, and I think next meeting was the time we gave them to come talk about it, so.
All right.
Um, uh, but I've, I've had, and, and not one negative comment about it, so.
It is a safety thing.
It is, and they, they.
It's funny how different neighborhoods come across.
Yeah.
But everybody, everybody that I've talked to has said, we've had a problem with deliveries, we have a problem with it, and it's, so they're like, we, we want this to get fixed, so they're happy about it, um, so that's, so that's moving forward, so it's looking like it's probably going to be Crossman Drive Extension.
And that's acceptable with the nine-one-one folks.
Yes, yeah, we're talking about it, we have the numbers, um, there's some, we'll take that opportunity to update some actual numbers, cuz they're out of whack a little bit too, so we'll, we'll fix we'll, we'll, we're gonna fix the whole thing all at once. Um, tomorrow afternoon is the Route Four East Traffic Committee meeting with V-Trans.
Oh.
So, uh, we will have, we will.
Zoom?
Put it on, yeah, we'll put it on in here, and if anybody wants to come over, it's at one thirty tomorrow, and we'll.
I can't wait to hear the logic, I, I.
So I have been preparing some thoughts. Well.
Good for you.
So, so the speed limit now is forty-five.
Yeah.
Yeah.
The speed limit from West Rutland to Center Rutland on a four-lane section of the same road is forty. So, you know, and these folks aren't complaining about the speed. You know, or the speeding of the speed limit, they're complaining about the speed is too high for the location, which is different than complaining, cuz that, that letter or the response was, they were talking about speeding. But that's not the issue, the issue is, it's too high for the conditions.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, through the city of Rutland, that speed limit is thirty-five to the entire city.
Yeah.
Or thirty, actually, in places, and then thirty-five when you get up on, so, but I, I have been thinking, so I'm really gonna try to be here.
Good, thank you.
It's gonna interfere with murder and hay, but I'll try to.
Yeah.
It'll be, it should be an interesting meeting, I'm, I'm.
What's that?
You've had an awful lot of sunshine, though.
Yes, but we've had an awful broke more.
Yeah. Uh, so, we, well, I guess we'll, we'll recap that the next time, one thirty.
One thirty, all right.
Uh, the tree out front was, was trimmed, they, they got, they got that done, um, uh, the, the beginning of speaker, I think it was last week, uh, came up pretty good, they were here for a little while and, and cut, and trimmed it, he's like, they, they shaped it, gave it a nice, nice shape, and he's like.
They did, and the little buds are coming.
Yeah.
So they did a good job.
They tried to avoid bearing patches a little bit too much, but it definitely, definitely took a lot off, and it was, it was good, so. Um, we received our grant reimbursement from VLCT for our annual safety grant, so that's forty-six hundred dollars. Uh, that paid for, um, the, some upgrades we did at Mike for his, uh, surveillance and, uh, all of Dave's, um, confined space equipment, to, they, they bought all our confined space equipment, so that's, we've gotten, we got fifty percent match on that, so, uh, we received that back, that's all back in their accounts. And, um, Monday, I won't be here Monday.
Okay.
Everybody else is good. That's on, that's on this schedule, I send that every week too, so, uh, oh, and the last thing, um, there is, uh, VLCT sent out some information today. Uh, there are some, um, grant programs that are going to be coming out that, um, will help municipalities with expenses if they want to switch to a dot gov. System rather than dot com. Um there are a lot of it. Oh, no, 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 not not even close. Uh there are, there are a lot of advantages um. To having a dot gov email address uh and the grant would help basically pay for the. Pay for the people to help make that transition because there's some work to do. So I have requested information on what's involved in doing that to see. Uh it's something that was brought up. Many years ago, uh Josh talked about that at one point, um but it wasn't. It wasn't the what it was expensive at that point, but they've they've changed a lot of that to be able to get to it, so um. So I'm going to get some information on that and when I when I have that, I will uh. I'll bring that back, but that that could be a good, it's it's a lot of places is really positive. The uh there is some. Background um cybersecurity benefits to having a dot gov.
Yeah.
Systems, but it I mean, it would involve changing the website. Email addresses, things like that. So there's, yes, they really would. So there are, there definitely are some, there are some background. Uh things that would have to get done and changed, but there they assist with like setting up redirections. So if people. People email your existing email address, it would forward automatically, like all that stuff will happen in the background, but that helps to help people. Um with the with coordinating that, so uh but that just came out today, so we've got more to come. And then everything else is left is on the agenda.
Alrighty, so down down under action items, we've signed the letter for inviting Mr. Anthony to come talk to us. Uh B, I receive this is board to appoint an intermunicipal team to coordinate with the city for the state two hundred and fiftieth anniversary. Is it state or is it?
Keep saying it's the nation.
It is.
It's not the state.
Yeah.
Well, the state's been advertising their their two hundred and fiftieth anniversary, so.
I I don't. Because.
I'm not sure.
Vermont became us.
Seventeen ninety one? I it was, we were an independent republic for longer than Texas.
That's right.
And it really annoys Texans.
Right, because we were the fourteenth state.
Yes.
And and we were an independent republic for I don't know how long, yes. But if it's not twenty fifty years.
It's Declaration of Independence.
Declaration of Independence was signed in seventeen seventy six.
Right.
And next year will be two hundred and fifty years.
Yes.
Okay, which is why Paul Clifford called me and said, he's now a city alderman. You'll remember he was.
Here for a while. He just keeps changing communities.
Anyway, he said, would the town be willing to come talk with the the city's intermunicipal committee? About um two hundred and fiftieth anniversary celebration. I said, sure, why not?
I think we first got to figure out whose birthday we're celebrating.
They want fireworks.
Well, I I mentioned fireworks as being a question that had come to mind.
Ideal time to get started.
We have an intermunicipal committee.
Well, see, here's the intermunicipal committee is me and whoever. Would fit the criteria, because if it was a a highway thing, it would be somebody from Highway Committee if it was a. Whatever, use of the pool thing, yeah.
Yeah.
So this is kind of wide open, but I got thinking about this and. It seems to me and a logical person to be on this municipal committee would be either. Matt or Kurt, because you guys will be around when we celebrate. In twenty five years, right? So you'll be able to carry on the tradition. We won't be around.
We we may last longer than the country.
And I don't really care, but that was my thought. Are either of you interested in being on this intermunicipal committee for the purpose? And I said to Paul. You're not gonna toss anything else on the agenda, or he goes, no, 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 no. I said, okay. Alright.
Can we toss things on?
Well, not until after we've.
Oh, it works.
Is it with our?
That mechanism.
Our attorney next week. That's our plan.
Uh do we have to do anything on this soon?
Um, we just need to tell them who our committee is and then they will.
Should Mike join in on it, Row?
You know, possibly eventually, but this was the the two intermunicipal committees. Not seventeen ninety one.
March fourth.
There, I was right. Just once tonight, but still I'll hang on to that. So youngsters relatively on the select board, which one of you wants to do it?
No, it goes. I don't have to do anything this month.
Wait, isn't your office in the city, Matt?
Oh, see, there you go, yeah. I I do think that if.
Got him.
We're gonna do something. Along that line, that. Mike Rowe might be a good person to be part of this too. I don't know what they're planning, but he, you know.
I think Paul was talking about. The Aldermanic Committee first and then part of the first discussion would be who do we include?
Right.
From our departments, what departments need to get involved? And I'm sure Rec is going to be one on their side and on our side as well.
Cause I I um I I was telling them last time is that in nineteen in nineteen seventy six. You know, the town put on a. Pretty big. Deal at the school. For the two hundred.
Seventeen seventy six, okay.
Nineteen, yeah.
And nineteen seventy six.
Nineteen seventy six. I was around for the two hundred anniversary and two hundred and fifty.
Around for a hundred, but.
We had a town, a town two hundred, didn't we?
Two hundred and fiftieth birthday for the town.
And that was.
At the at the church.
Yeah, I was, I was, I had a little.
We were we were over at CD and the chapel and and we had, yeah, that was two hundred and fifty years.
The town.
For the town, it was charred, because the charters, a lot of the towns were chartered in seventeen sixty one.
Yes.
All across, you'll see them everywhere. And so we had that was for the town. Um the state's two hundred and fiftieth birthday is. A little ways, I don't even know if the state did anything in nineteen ninety one for two hundred years.
Wait, you know, I don't remember.
I I don't remember if we did.
Plates.
Huh?
Oh, the license plates.
For two hundred years, so we're a ways away from.
It was before my time, yes.
We're we're sixteen years away from. Two hundred and fifty years as a state.
Yeah. Alright, so.
But it would be, yeah, it'd be nice to do, but I think we all gotta get this together, that this isn't the state's two hundred. It's the country.
Okay.
As we get to blow up some fireworks, who cares? And that was the point when I talked to North Star, they haven't decided that yet because they're anticipating a substantial request for for that.
Yeah, Fourth of July is gonna be right, just.
Crazy.
Need to get the whole county on this committee?
Well.
Big fireworks.
Okay, who I was talking with.
Three different locations. So it'd be wild.
And Mendon's, then it's like, huh, you guys have gotten together, huh? So you know, it it's good spread, but.
Then you gotta pick a spot.
Yeah, there's that.
Someplace, you know, if you're gonna do fireworks together, it'd be nice to have a place where the public could. Watch them without being either in the road or in their life in death jeopardy, but.
They go over the airport, they could park on the runways and we'll set them off way down to the farm.
No planes coming in at night anyway.
And there's more than you think down there.
Well, if runway is closed from nine to ten.
Yeah, it takes actor Congress closer.
So shall we start with Matt?
Sure.
Okay. And then we'll see what they have in mind and then as different committees get pulled in.
Yeah.
And I'm sure Rec is gonna be one of them, so you guys will be part. Okay, I'll let them know. Thank you. Um. Uh takes care of B. Uh board to discuss budget planning for the next fiscal year. Alright, this is when we talk backwards. Um. We have to have the budget. And everything to the printer.
I don't have a, I don't have a schedule yet.
Okay.
That's.
And the school before too long will be asking us, when do you want to have pre-town meeting in January? So we've got to know that.
Yep.
So I think usually we've been pushing to have the budgets done by the. First board meeting of December.
I think so. I think we always say we should do it by Thanksgiving and we never quite make it.
Yeah.
So it ends up being the first week.
It's it's kind of one of those things where if you wait just a little longer, you've got like half the spending for this fiscal year, which gives. Folks a little bit of an idea what they need, but.
So that's the second.
So I I was asked the other day by the auditor for for still still some information on grant tracking and how we do that. So I just gave that to her yesterday, so.
Okay.
We we, I don't, I'm not sure if they can actually. Put in final, because we we shift the budget sheets. So we do the budget sheets with the numbers that were adjusted at the end of the fiscal year and that hasn't been done yet, so. I don't know how close they are, like there's still that whole process has got to get done before we can actually have draft budget sheets to get last year's numbers on.
Yeah.
Well, I think we should work on our budgets from. Fifteenth of October to. December first and have them ready.
Okay, so that means.
Then you can schedule.
Yeah.
Um a special meeting for the budgets and you look at that already, Kurt.
The second was the first in December.
Yeah. But we can figure out, you know, when you want to do that. Cause it's nice to have that all done before the holidays.
It and it worked pretty well last year, I thought, yeah. So why don't we and and this will give us time, I think Matt and I need to work or meet with police before. And then so if we had one now and then we had one in. October. So we should be talking and then we have the. You know, like the listers and the transfer station committee and some of you folks are gonna have several meetings.
You know, these guys can start thinking.
There's planning commission, the constables.
You know, instead of waiting a lot, give them, and you brought it up tonight to everybody, so everybody's on board. They know on that. Budget season's coming.
Yeah. Okay, so that's good.
It's not like it's new. It's not like it's sneaking up on us.
Okay, so we're building budgets within days between October fifteenth and December one. Um with the target of having a budget. Vote on our. First second meeting in December. That's good. Um. Select board project list is there. Oh, hey, so we get to take off the.
Yeah, since the final payment has been authorized. That can go.
Right.
We can take off. The.
Pop a cork.
New Public Safety Building.
Like we had pop a cork on something.
Break a bottle over the corner of the building or something.
No, don't. Okay, um committee meeting reports, do we have any? Okay.
Well, next time.
Alright, and. Don't forget next Tuesday's meeting with Town Council. And the deadline for the circle, September fifteenth and oh, quick thank you note from one of our scholarship recipients. I'm truly honored to have been selected as a scholarship recipient. Thank you for your generosity and support in helping me pursue my educational goals. Kind results, kind regards, Mackenzie McLaughlin, and this is to the Town of Rutland Scholarship Committee, so. Thank you, Sharon and Matt.
Yep. So there's two things that I want to, we we should be thinking about. Um one, and we need to talk with. Uh the electrician that did the. Fire station, Public Safety Building to. Get a quote from him on running that power line down to the sewer pump that state place. Because that pump needs to be run from the building in case of. Power loss, the generator will cover that. Um and I had talked to JJ about it several times, but I'm sure he's probably really busy, so um we need to reach out to him and ask him for. And I'd like him to do it because he's familiar with the building, so it won't be somebody new coming in and trying to find a circuit and figure out where it's coming from and where the. Conduit is in that. And then the other thing I think that we should really consider now that the building is ours and we've paid for it. Is either talking with JJ or someone about what are our options with that generator that's there. The generator is way too big for the building. Um it's gonna be a liability for the town. Um this is one of the. Peeps I have with that whole building was what the electrical engineer designed into the building. Um and I think with a little help from an electrician and whomever we could. We're gonna probably take a hit on that thing, but. Get a smaller one that would be more in line with what the station uses. We have power bills, excuse me, for that building for the first. Seven, eight months, so we know what the demand is going to be, what the usage is there, and then get something tailored more to that building.
Let's see if we can sell the generator.
Well, I'm hoping that if we deal with. Northfield or somebody, they'll give us a pretty good. Return on a almost new generator. It is used, but get something that's going to run. Uh much smaller fuel capacity, um more in line with with our needs, you know, this, that was something that was just out of our. Scope of knowledge, I think at the time and and now we're just, it's gonna be a liability going forward. Um. So, I mean, I can reach out to JJ if you want or Kirk, because Kirk knows him pretty well, either either way.
I know JJ some last night.
Yeah.
I I don't have a problem starting that conversation because.
Yeah, cause I I I just, I just.
I mean, we were talking about, for heaven's sake, filling up fire trucks from it, so.
Well, the the tank that Dave wanted to buy initially is smaller than the fuel tank underneath the generator.
Yeah.
So if you wanna. Yeah. You know, and and I could. You and I go down and talk to him about, because he knows about the.
Talk to him about putting an outlet in the uh generator panel for us over there?
Sure. I just as well, because he, I mean, those guys did a great job at the wiring up there and and he was really good to work with. I really like. You know, his attitude and working with him. Oh, good, very, very. Common sense approach to what he's doing.
Yes, it's top notch for sure.
Yeah, so. Alright, that was just, that was just.
Yes, thank you.
Keep rattling around up there and it finally fell out.
Alright. Anything else?
We'll do Jared.
Second, as has been made in second and non-viable, all in favor of adjourning, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries five zero. Thank you, folks. Have a good evening.